Good evening, everybody. Called to order this regular session of the Tiger Tuolton School District Board of Directors. We'll start with the approval of our agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Superintendent?
There are no changes, Chair.
Would any of my fellow board members like to recommend changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all right. I would approve, I would entertain a motion. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Weston and seconded by Vice Chair Irvin that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We move on now to the best part of the evening, that is our recognition and good news.
Okay, so, good evening, Chair Jashmi, Vice Chair Irvin, board members, Dr. Udo Seneta and students. Thank you for welcoming us here this evening. And so, I have the honor this evening to speak about our school supply donation program. And I could not speak about the program tonight without thanking Thea Pansivicius for all the work that she's done over the years. Thea worked for the school district and retired in 2019 and managed the school supply program during the time that she worked for us. And then, from the day she retired, she continued her commitment as a volunteer to manage the program. So, I just really thank Thea for all of her work connecting with our community partners and continuing to bring in donations of school supplies every year for TTSD students. Next slide, please. So, we have several community partners, organizations, companies that we partner with throughout the year for school supply donations. This evening, only a couple people could be here from Rice Church, but we will honor all of those groups that we want to recognize this year. And so, joining us from Rice Church this evening is Joanne Shipley and, I'm sorry, Jill.
Jill Hibbs.
Jill Hibbs, sorry, Jill Hibbs. Get to my next slide. Okay, sorry, go back. Sorry, I was talking to myself, sorry about that. So, every year, we partner with Rice Church. They have supported our schools, especially locally around Rice Church, Templeton Elementary and Tuolty Middle School with a lot of things. But the school supply donation program that they run every year is just outstanding. They collect backpacks and supplies for all grade levels and we just appreciate their work every single year with their congregation and community members amongst a lot of other volunteer events that they have throughout the year. So, we just want to thank you for your work and for all the supplies you provide to students every year.
And one correction?
Yeah?
One correction would be, they support our middle and high school programs. A lot of times, those are overlooked and lots of people want to bring crayons and things in for elementary, but they have been supporters of our middle school and high school students, bringing in about 250 completed backpacks every year.
Yeah, and I remember one year, they donated a special calculator, didn't they? Collect those, yeah, that were fairly expensive and collected those from their congregation. Is there anything you'd like to share?
I would just say, thank you so much for the honor. And I know there's a whole lot of people out there in the community that support the school supply program too. And Thea is an absolute wonder making this happen. If you haven't seen the mountains of supplies that she overlooks, oversees, you should go and look someday because it's astounding.
All right, next slide, please. So, some of the other community partners that we partner with, Golden State Food Foundation. And in the last few years, they've donated a large pallet or pretty large pallet of supplies. It's always kind of fun when they come because they like to take a picture in front of our sign, in front of the building and just are extremely generous in their donation collection of supplies. Next slide, please. Lisa Baumz with Pilot Property Management. Willsey has worked with her group to make donations for the last couple of years. And so, really, any donations we receive are very welcome. And having the backpacks to be able to hand off to students is also really important.
She operates a little different than most people because she is a business of property management. I believe what she does is sends out emails every now and then because she'll ask me, what is it that you need right now? And if I say that we need to have a certain thing of thick markers, then all of a sudden, there's a call to say, hey, stop by the office, I've got a bunch of thick markers. So, she does work with a lot of partnerships and there will be items that will come in from Amazon because somebody just ordered something and will have it delivered to her office. So, she has a lot of contacts and is very supportive within the community.
That's cool. All right, next slide, please. And then, as well, the last couple of years, Christie Krippen with Navidia. They do a big donation of Bright School Kits. And Thea was explaining to me that the staff get to go in and basically pick the level of kit that they want to purchase and then they get delivered in a pallet as others every year.
That's one pallet. I think that we received seven or eight pallets this year. Each one of those boxes right there has, I think, eight backpacks in it.
That's pretty amazing. Sawstop, next slide, please, sorry. Sawstop is another local business who collects supplies. And you can see here, just an amazing job of collecting the things that we need. Oftentimes, they, like Thea said, they'll contact us and ask what, you know, what they can purchase. We can share the supply list for some of the schools, but it's pretty amazing and awesome that they'll contact to find out exactly what our students need. And it's Tracy Richards with Sawstop, who organized their school supply drive. Next slide, please. Lightspeed is another local vendor who, or local business, who collected supplies. And like I said earlier, every little bit counts. And so, we just appreciate them, their employees and their customers donating supplies. And sometimes, it's just Lysol wipes and things like that that classrooms need. So, Kleenex, it's really important. Next slide, please. Oh, and I'm sorry, that was Heather Bisbee with Lightspeed Technologies. Want to recognize, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Next slide. And then, last but not least, we partner with KGW every single year. They have donated pallets of school supplies. You probably see their collections happening on the news and they donate to a lot of school districts across the metro area. And we're fortunate to always receive donations from them. And so, we just thank them as well for their donation, continued support everything, every single school year.
Yeah, we go down and we pick up the materials. This was this year's pallet that our warehouse was able to go down and pick up from the KGW studios. Then, in addition, if you've seen any of the advertisement on TV, you'll see that you can also donate money through the community and be able to do that. They will take the money now and they will go through and purchase supplies. And so, we'll get an email come around October. So, sometime between October and January, we'll receive however much money that they've been able to divide out. And we usually receive another pallet or two of supplies that will be able to help us out.
That's pretty amazing. And I just wanted to make sure we thanked Spencer Winter. I don't know if you're familiar, he manages our warehouse and he works with Thea all year long to bring in these deliveries. And then, of course, our staff are also assisting with making deliveries out to schools. And so, we just appreciate all of our community partners, their support and throughout the year. So, thank you. Questions or comments?
Well, as a parent and a teacher and a person that loves this district, I just think this is such an incredible service and thing that you provide because we know how important it is for kiddos to feel like they are coming through that door on the first day of school and they are ready to go from day one, they have what they need. Yeah, like, there's just that whole component of feeling like, you know, especially if they are in a situation where for that year, that grade, that moment, they don't have, for whatever reason, the things that they might feel like they want or need to just sort of, normalizing that everybody has the things that they need in whichever way they got it. And so, I love that we provide this. I am, I don't think I knew all the, you know, I knew that the backpacking school supply donation program was a thing and not really realizing how many different, I knew about Rice Church and KGW, but wasn't really certain or aware of some of the other places that were doing such incredible work for us. And so, just that community piece of everybody's, right? Like, I think I said this at some point last year, but like, everybody's kiddos belong to all of us in a community. And so, that's just another way that we show that we're all here for each other. So, I think that's a really awesome thing that you guys are doing and thank you so much. Just want to say, I know there's a lot of uncertainty and struggle with families right now, for families in the larger context and with inflation and just a lot of uncertainty in the job market. And I think there's a lot of divestment in our young people. And so, this is so great to see people stepping up and filling in those gaps as best they can. So, really appreciate everything you all are doing and it means a lot to the community and thank you.
I want to thank you on behalf, you know, all of the students because I really think you're doing, all the work that we should all be doing, right? Is collecting all these supplies since we need them and so, thank you so much for that.
I'll echo what Vice Chair Irvin said in that it's so great to know that kids can just walk in and have the supplies that they need. Thank you both for being here and thank you for all of your work in organizing this. It was so amazing to see a representation of all of these community partners and what they give. And just to know that that kind of support is available from the community and from partners who just want kids to have what they need when they walk in the door. So, thank you for that, that's really heartwarming.
I have one more thing. I know that teachers, I meant to say this, really appreciate the wipes and the Kleenex and the Lysol, all of that. Like, that's always the stuff that we're either asking for or we're being asked to send even a couple months in and we're getting into cold and flu season. So, while all the kids have what they need, really giving, because we've all been there and like, you're opening the drawer for the thick marker or the Kleenex and there's nothing. And so, I know that's like, they're so grateful for all those pieces too that the teachers get.
And I just want to echo the thanks of everybody and also, Thea, thank you so much. I've been watching you over the years. I mean, I think you started before I did, building up this program. And every year, you've got more people involved, more groups involved. And, but you haven't lost any of the groups that you started with, it seems like. And your ability to pull people together for this incredible effort is so impressive. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. I love what you guys are doing and I thank you because you're the boots on the ground, right? Actually getting the supplies. But the work that Thea and Spencer do to organize it all, to get it to the kids, is huge. So, thank you all so much for all that you do for kids. And I was really glad to see all of the art supplies in those boxes. You know, it's not just paper pencil, it's paints and markers and all of those creative things that I know our kiddos love. Thank you.
I can't say it any better than our board members have said it, but I just want to say, thank you so much on behalf of our staff. Your service and all the work that goes into putting these supplies together is huge for our community and it makes a big difference, so thank you so much.
Should we take a picture?
Yeah. Definitely.
Stay behind it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I am short, so, yeah. Oh.
Right, yep. Front and center, front and center, right here. But we just, yeah, you're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
All right, well, that's a hard act to follow, but I'm going to turn to our student representatives now and ask them to follow that. So, who would like to start? Maybe Tigery Tuolton? Why don't you go on ahead, sir?
Hi, guys. I hope you're having a great Monday. So, this week is actually relatively busy. Next week, we have Club Fair. I know I'm talking about this week, but a little unorganized in the fall activities. Club Fair takes place on the 17th of September. The homecoming day is still being determined by ASB. September 11th and 12th, we have Picture Day all day. September 29th and 30th, we have the first wind time schedule. September 11th through 13th, we have Dress to Dream. And Suicide Prevention Week is observed September 17th through 13th and the entire month of September is Suicide Prevention Week, or month, sorry.
For sports, Varsity Football this week has a game on Friday at 7:00 PM against South Salem. They're hosting. Varsity Volleyball has a game tomorrow against Oregon City at Tuolton High School at 6:30 PM. And another one on Thursday, September 11th, at St. Mary's, or, yeah, at St. Mary's at 6:30 PM. Varsity Girls Soccer has one tomorrow as well, at Roosevelt at 7:00 PM. They also have another one on September 11th against Wells at 7:00 PM. Varsity Boys has one tomorrow. Everyone loves tomorrow for sports. At Roosevelt, wait, no, sorry, against Benson at 7:00 PM. And then, they also have one September 11th at Wells at 7:00 PM. Cross Country has a meet on Friday at the Merryweather Classic. I think is how you say that? I'm not quite sure. And Water Polo on Wednesday, this is going against Sheldon and that's going to be boys' water polo.
For sports at Tiger, it's also a pretty busy week. We have a football game at Jesuit at 7:00 PM, varsity this Friday. And then, JV plays at home against Jesuit on Thursday. And volleyball has games at home tomorrow versus St. Mary's and at Oregon City on Thursday. Boys and girls soccer both have games Tuesday and Thursday. Boys has games on Tuesday at Central and Thursday at home versus Sandy. Girls has games tomorrow versus McDaniel at home and at Grant on Thursday. And water polo has the Tiger Tournament this Friday at 4:30 PM for varsity. And there's also a cross country Merryweather Invitational at 4:30.
So, for the non-sports thing, for clubs, we have a club president meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30. We have Club Rush next week on Wednesday during both lunches. And our clubs are starting to have their first meetings of the year, either this week or next week. And then, with Tuolton High School, we're having our student roundtable meeting here next week on Tuesday for the entire day. And then, in terms of the phone policy at Tiger, students are taking it pretty well. However, there is some pushback because they're like, what the heck, we can't have our phones. And last week, there are only about 70 of you phones confiscated, which is pretty good.
I'd like to add on to the phone policy. Our school has actually taken it really nicely. They all pretty much have taken it and rolled with it. There's a, all the staff is really happy that there's actual connection happening at lunch. It's all they ever talk about. But, we've had a pretty positive reaction to it.
I am super glad to hear that. Welcome to 1980.
How about 98? The 1900s, so let's throw it all in the same.
The 1900s. Do we have any questions for student reps?
I was asked about the cell phone policy, so they took care of that.
Okay. Then we'll move on to superintendent and board communication.
Thank you. And thank you to our student reps for being here and for your reports today. So, last week, we welcomed back 10,900 students. It's about 300 down from what we were a year ago, based on our ADM report, but still pretty good. And my staff and I did our best to get into as many schools as possible. I think I got into every comprehensive school. Kinders start today and some of our special programs start today. And so, I got some more visits to do, maybe some treats to deliver. But, it was an amazing first week. In every school that we went into, it was always staff working really hard to welcome students and assist students, whether it was directing traffic in the parking lot during arrival time or helping students get to their classes during passing periods or during transition times, expectation rotations in all the schools that I was at, or at least in the elementary and middle schools. And so, a lot of really good routines being set and I think we're off to a really positive note in schools. I mentioned this in my weekly note to the board, but there's still some kinks to iron out. Some of the things that we're paying close attention to is buses. And I think we're doing better than we did last year, but we still have some buses that were running late. And we don't ever want a kid to be waiting a long time at a bus stop. So, that's something that we're really mindful of. We don't want kids to miss out on instruction, we don't want it to slow down the operations of schools. So, it's something that we're, again, taking really seriously and working with our transportation providers to make sure that we can iron out those kinks. And Director Gomez is on top of it. We're also closely monitoring class sizes. Even though our enrollment's down, remember, we don't have quite as many staff either. So, there's a couple of spots, no matter how well we plan, maybe some extra kids move into a neighborhood or maybe there's a shift in a certain class here and there. And we're waiting to the 10-day drop to make any further adjustments to our staffing allocations to mitigate the impacts of some high-class sizes. And we have a couple of spots that we're looking at. So, just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that. And something interesting, Art Ruckin, which was right around that 120 number in enrollment last year, is about 380 now. So, that's a very significant shift. And it's taking some getting used to as well. You know, you get used to a school being a certain size, but that staff at Ruckin is doing a great job there. Principal Kingery and team are doing a good job of making that transition and making every kid feel welcome. So, want to give a shout out to them as well. At our middle schools, our enrollment is up at our two smaller middle schools, right? Smaller meaning 800. So, Hazelbrook and Fowler are now over 800. And again, we're closely monitoring our class sizes there as well, especially if there's any areas that are high and we get to that 10-day drop and we know need attention. And then, Tuolty is just under 1,000. So, kind of a larger bubble pushing through our middle schools right now. Transitioning, and so, Dr. McCall's going to tell you a little bit more about the first week of school, so I don't want to steal all of her thunder, but she's going to bring you some of the really positive stuff happening in schools for the first week as well. I want to talk about the bond just for a moment. So, our bond leadership team is actively working weekly, planning, making sure that we're all lined out for some big bond projects, working again on assembling the bond oversight committee. So, we have about 10 applications out for it right now. And our application window runs through October. So, if we have people who are interested in serving on that, go on our website and find where to apply. A couple of notes on the bond planning, as we meet weekly, we get to see all the decisions that go into making sure that these projects, one, come in on time, but also that we get it right and on budget. And there's a lot of decisions to be made. So, I want to say kudos to our bond leadership team because everything from trying to decide the best location for the restrooms that are being put in at the stadiums to making sure that we come in at industry standard for our playgrounds, there's just so many decisions to be made. Like, how many stalls do we have? Do we have five stalls or four stalls? Is it east-facing, is it west-facing? So, all those decisions are really going to prime us for when we have the larger projects that we take on and making sure that we have a system. And again, we'll bring reporting to you monthly on that, but just want to let you know that we're making good progress and really learning a lot, even as we're early into the bond process. I did want to take a moment to send some well wishes to someone from the Tiger Tuolton family and the Tiger High School family. So, on Friday night, head coach Todd Christ had a scary moment. Had a medical concern happen on the field and was taken to the hospital for evaluation where he was released. And it was really scary, but we know that he is well and recovering. And Coach, we're just helping for a speedy recovery and that you're taking care of yourself and that you're back on the sidelines in no time. So, we're just thinking about you and wanted to mention that in the boardroom. And then, finally, just to end on a positive note, Thor, can you throw up that picture? So, we mixed things up a little bit in our district, rah rah, welcome back. And, but what better way than for someone like me to step back and let the real Energizer bunnies get up there and be emcees? So, Principal Matt Coleman from Byram and Principal Dr. Mills, Jordan Mills from Bridgeport, really did an outstanding job of keeping the energy high. And the whole team that was involved in planning that, Lisa Burton did so much work on making sure that all the details are ironed out, the Hibbert team. Reggie did an outstanding job with, Steg Meyer did an outstanding job with his keynote speech. And then, Templeton found another way to win the relay, which I think you got about 17 schools that are really bitter about it. But overall, it was a really good event and we had some fun. But also, something that was important is, we acknowledge that last year was a hard year and we're also focusing on healing and being present in the schools and being together. So, overall, it was just a really great way to start off the year and we hope the fun that we had there is a sign of things to come. So, shout out to Dr. Mills and Mr. Coleman for kicking things off. And that is it for my report.
There was some discussion I heard about whether HR had done some stacking of the deck at Templeton to make it so that they had ringers on the field.
Conspiracy theory.
But I don't think that happened. Thank you very much. Any of my fellow board members wish to go first? To Weston.
Thank you for all those updates so far. Just want to express appreciation for the first week of school and Labor Day and acknowledge all the hard work everyone's doing across our systems, both educators and all of our staff. And also, thank you to our leadership, spot checking and adjusting things and making sure everything's running as smoothly as it can be. And I also wanted to point out a point of celebration. We have a robust group of freshmen coming in to grow our orchestra programs. And this is the crop of kids that came back after COVID and are just now entering the high school and sending reinforcements to what sometimes a single, you know, viola player, for example, they're just now getting a crop of freshmen to bring those programs back up. And I just think it's a beautiful thing and also a reminder that any investment that we make takes time, right? And I know other people have made this point, but I just felt like it was such a good demonstration of that point is that when we make an investment, it does take a long time to work through the system. So, it's just a nice thing to see. And we have other things that are coming back over time as we invest in them. Happy start to the school year.
Director Miles.
I was out of the country last week, so I didn't get to go to any of the celebrations, but I have heard wonderful things. It was really great to see pictures all over social media of first days of school. And I just want to say, thank you to all the staff, to all the teachers. I know there's always such positive energy and such. I know there's always such positive energy and such, um, such love for, um, welcoming students and welcoming fellow staff, um, back, and the camaraderie that goes into, um, to putting together a first school day and a first school week. And, um, and I really appreciate that, um, in this district. I mean, I know that, that happens everywhere as well. And, um, and students, um, having their first day at school all together and having their first day at school for the last year that they're going to be there and everything in between. And so, um, thank everybody here and all of the staff that puts together such a, a great start to the year.
Vice Chair.
Let's see. Um, to the back-to-school event, it was, like, those two sort of emceeing it were like the, the perfect amount of unhinged to make it like really delightful and wonderful and funny and, um, get everybody in the spirit. It was really, really wonderful. And I know that it was a little outside of their comfort zone to do that, although you wouldn't know that, um, from watching them up there, but they, both Jordan and Matt did an awesome job. So that was really great, and I heard a lot of really good feedback from that back-to-school event from teachers and staff. My straw poll from middle school and some friends I know there, um, kind of tagging a little bit onto the cellphone conversation that some of our high schoolers said, it's really going well, and most kids are kind of like, you sort of, like, they talked about it, so you kind of realized it was different and they sort of missed it. But really, it's, I think there was a really good runway in terms of some of our TTSD policies that sort of limited you, so now when there's not any, like, it's not this huge difference for them. And so what I've heard from my kiddo and friends is that it's been really smooth, um, from what they've seen, and so that's been really great. Then the only other thing is Director Heimis and I will be going to the OSBA board, board meeting this weekend, so probably in the next board meeting, we'll have things to report, kind of related to legislative work, some work that OSBA will be doing, um, for students and school board members. I think that's all I have.
That's what I was going to say, so there we go. And then also, um, the heartbreak loss to, for, you know, Tiger, they lost, you know? It was, it was bad, but they get a new hat there, so if that makes anybody happy.
Okay, well, I believe Tuolotin won, so you know, unbalanced, it was a good week. I had the best time last week. I went to the first day of school. I went to Bridgeport and welcomed kiddos in there. The energy as those kiddos were coming into the building was just off the charts. And then I went to Tuolotin High School. It was, um, bringing in the ninth graders for the first day. And it was absolutely touching to see these kiddos kind of looking around. One kid said to me, "This is a really big building. I'm not sure where I'm supposed to go." But the thing I loved was that he saw that I had a badge on, and he knew I was a trusted adult, and he came to me and asked for directions, "Where's my first period class?" And it was, it's, it's that, and the students had the understanding that if you're wearing a badge in the building, you're a trusted adult. And a kid who doesn't know me from a hole in the wall knew to walk up and, and ask for help. And the fact that our kids are that willing to do that really warmed my heart. Second day of school, I went, uh, to Byram and then to Hazelbrook Middle School. At Hazelbrook, uh, I had the delightful experience of watching a young man come off the bus with his phone in his hand, and then he stopped and he unzipped his backpack and he put it in the pocket of his backpack and he zipped it back up and he proceeded into the building. And I caught him and I was like, "Way to go. That's exactly what I wanted to see today." So our kiddos are doing the right things. They know what the rules are. We've been really clear from day one, and they're doing them. And I think that's, it's a great testament to us as a board, getting the rules in place before the start of school. Administration working so hard to make sure that all of the mechanisms for getting those rules put into place in the buildings, and then all of our administrators and teachers doing the work of reinforcing, meant that our kids know what to do on the first day of school. And it was really a, an incredibly smooth first week of school. And then, as if that weren't enough, good fun for me this morning, I got to do first day of kindergarten at Bridgeport. And, um, and it was a fabulous day, and I helped kids with their lunch. And these are the kids who were born during COVID, who we all thought maybe had, maybe, you know, more social problems than previous, uh, classes of kids might have. I didn't see any sign of that in the lunchroom today. The kids were talking with each other, having a good time, even when, you know, they were kindergartners and they didn't know what getting the lunch tray meant and where do you go next and where do I sit. They all knew they had friends at that table and were raring to go from, from the first minute. So it's, it was a great first week of school, and I'm really excited to see what the rest of the year looks like. Okay, anything else for my, Ms. Lee Ruben? Yes. Sarah.
I agree, the phone thing has been going really well on my first day of school, um, because I'm in a class of seniors for my IP history. There was so many people going through the most crazy and humorous scenarios. There was this girl talking about, "What if the building burns down and I'm like stuck in the stall bathroom and I can't call my mom, so she can't tell the firefighters to come get me, and I can't say goodbye to my mom and tell her that I'm alone?" But overall, the phone policy has been going well. I just thought I'd add that in there for some comedic effect.
Fortunately, we have fire alarms in all of our schools and people who know how to pull them, but not the students, hopefully, um, except in emergencies. Thank you. Okay, that's it for our superintendent board communication. For public comment, just double-checking, we have nobody signed up for public comment, okay? So we'll move straight into our reports and discussion. And our first item is, in fact, our report summary of the first week of school with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lisa McCall. Welcome back to the Dias podium. Dias.
Hey, good evening, Board Director, Student Reps, Superintendent. This is a, kind of an annual thing that we've been doing in TTSD for the last four years. It's giving you all a glimpse of the first few, uh, days of school. As you know, school started last week, and Dr. Udo has shared with you all that we had our district office leaders out in school, starting right away at the arrival and also ending the day during dismissal. Uh, this was a time that, uh, just highlights, just a glimpse of all of the hard work that all of our staff has put into making sure that we open our doors ready for students. I want to just also, uh, call out that our custodians have done a amazing job of getting our buildings ready. It did not go unnoticed that when you're walking in the first day of school that the floors, everything is in place, but, uh, that has been some of the work of all of our custodians over the summer, so I wanted to call that out. Next slide. And so, uh, as we were in schools, we noticed, uh, relationships, uh, belonging, and it was important that students feel like the schools were a place where they belong. And lots of inclusive welcoming's happened at the beginning of the day, morning meetings, uh, frequent check-ins with students. Uh, we noticed that, uh, particularly for our sixth graders and our ninth graders, there were not only, um, staff that were helping, we had student leaders like the Link Crew, uh, welcoming students, assisting them as they transition, uh, their first day back. And, and if you went to any of our elementary schools, you would notice that, um, students were, uh, the rotation stations, learning the expectations, PAX routines. Uh, as some of you already noted, that, um, our new, uh, personal, um, device policy, students were being respectful. I had an opportunity to ask students, "How did it feel not having your cellphone during the day?" And, uh, a lot were honest that, you know, it wasn't so bad. Additionally, what we noticed in our visits is that our educators, who have been preparing, um, to engage students in learning, uh, we again have our eye-ready math that you can see teachers already teaching that. Another highlight was, uh, last week is that our kindergarten teachers were hosting kindergarten connections, and that was welcoming our kindergarten families in, having an opportunity for kindergartners to meet their teacher, visit the classroom. Uh, there are learning targets posted. It was just really nice to see, again, a glimpse of all of the hard work that our, um, educators have been doing, ready for the first week of school. Next slide. So one of my favorite quotes is Nelson Mandela. It's like, "Education is the most powerful weapon, which you can use to change the world." And that is, uh, in my opinion, always have been true. And so, um, in addition to, we wanted to hear from our voices of some of our leaders and parents and staff. And so you'll get a glimpse of, in our next slide, of what they shared about their first week.
Hi, my name is Cameron Powers, and my highlight of the first week of Tuolotin High School is meeting new teachers.
I'm Kylie Burke, and my highlight of Tuolotin High School was meeting new upperclassmen, and meeting new people to become friends.
Now.
Hi, this is Ms. Stewart at Deer Creek Elementary, having a Kinder Connect meeting with Anaya and her family. Are you ready for kindergarten, Anaya?
Go.
Hi, my name is Emily Anderson. I'm a first-year principal at Hazelbrook Middle School. We've had a really fun week so far. We've been working on school expectations. We've been handing out a lot of Hawkeye Fives, recognizing students for making good choices. I'm just super excited for the year. Bring in, the kids are bringing amazing energy. Our staff has been incredible and just looking forward to the work ahead.
Hi, I'm Emily Gawain, Literacy Specialist at Mary Woodward.
I'm Melanie Bailey, Literacy Specialist at Deer Creek Elementary.
And I'm Lisa Murphy, the Literacy Specialist at Durham.
Uh, we're here today just collaborating around our end class assessment rollout and getting ready to, um, screen, uh, all of our students, K through five, for literacy next week.
And our next slide is just a highlight of some of our visits, uh, last week. All right, so that concludes that presentation, and we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments from board members? I think we've all said, "Great start to the school year this year." I'm really excited for where we're heading. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our second report and discussion item is the first reading of our superintendent evaluation. Dr. Udo, take it away.
Thank you very much. So every year, um, one, uh, thing that I get to do is make some goals, which is a really good way to anchor our areas of focus for the school year. And, um, actually, it's really nice in the way that we, uh, worked out my goals since I've been here and that it's something that we generally set at the, um, at the board retreat, and then we kind of mold it and then bring it to, um, the board and public for a presentation in September after we get things kicked off. When I first started back in, um, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the board was really clear with me, and I appreciate the clarity, on two areas of focus. One was relationships, and one was, um, finder, finding a north star for an area that we can leverage, um, improvement in our district, whatever that may be. Uh, when we ended the school year, um, I was able to demonstrate, uh, areas where we did establish those connection points and building relationships with our greater community, um, our greater school community and, uh, inside of our, uh, school community. But one area that we really landed on too is, um, supporting our multilingual learners of English as, uh, a key focus area, so that we built into my goals, uh, today. So if we can go to the next slide, I want to show the three areas, um, that I like to focus on this year for my superintendent goals. So you'll see the first is, again, targeted academic supports for our multilingual, uh, learners of English. And importantly, what I want to do is make sure that we have as many inputs and factors, um, that are systematically implemented, so that we start seeing strong outcomes for our MLEs in our district, K-12, right? So whether that's a literacy component in, um, early, uh, early, uh, education, or it's a graduation and completion component towards the end of a student's experience here, we really want to make sure that we're being targeted and, um, developing a plan and implementing it so that we can have outcomes, and I'll get into more of that later. Financial stability and stewardship is something that's incredibly important for us as well. We know that, uh, if we're good financial stewards, we can provide both quality programming for our students and making sure that we, um, are avoiding, uh, any kind of fiscal crises to the best of our ability. And then the third goal is kind of just an extension and continuation of last year's goals. So, um, interesting on this is that, uh, we're scaffolding this in a way that there's potential for the board and the board's work to have some shared components of board goals, which we'll talk about in the next segment of this board meeting. Uh, next slide, please. So I just want to talk a little bit about goal one, which is supporting our, um, the academic improvement of our students, um, uh, that are designated as, uh, multilingual learners of English. Uh, next slide. Here's the, uh, the action items, and I try to be really succinct, but I have about five of them. And these are the ways that we're trying to harness this is, um, from a district leadership team that trickles into the, um, the way that we are establishing our, um, our mapping and planning with our school leaders. And then it's, hopefully, this plan is then working in partnership with the work that's happening in classrooms and ultimately getting down to students. And so, um, some of those is creating really clear, uh, system-wide MLE goals and strategies, and we're focusing on accountability and monitoring. So, um, do we have data systems in place, uh, that helps us monitor? And is that data system, one, informing us of our progress, but also helping us understand what areas, what we need to adjust and areas that we need to focus on? Being really clear with our leadership around, uh, this being an, an important priority and area of focus, and I think we've done that and established that with our, um, building leaders, uh, during our summer retreat. Providing relevant and, again, during the data, relevant and actionable, um, uh, data and, um, regular updates to the board, I think is important. And, uh, that's something that, that we, um, I think did a decent job on last year, but we want to be more explicit in terms of what actual actions are we taking? And then how, what, uh, outcomes are we getting and what kind, what kind of adjustment are we gonna, adjustments are we gonna make? And then importantly, if we're gonna, um, set high expectations for our staff or any kind of expectations, expectations for our staff, making sure that they have the professional development that they need, opportunities for training and the resources they need to support our students. And, um, one thing that I can't stress enough is we really want to get out into the community, and we know that if we can build community, that's just another input and another opportunity for us to, to collectively grow and support students as well. So that's, those are some, uh, high, some targeted, um, action items that we're going to take to, to achieve this goal. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about financial stewardship here. So, um, this one, I always, uh, comment that it seems less exciting than, than instruction and curriculum, but it's, uh, it's every, um, is very, is very important, because we need to have sound, uh, financial systems so that we can, again, provide the best quality programming for our students and mitigate any risks or threat of risk to our district financially. So, um, the way that we're doing that, and I, I got to give credit to Director C- So the way that we're doing that, and I gotta give credit to Director C and, and her leadership, but, is by developing a multi-year plan where we are really able to assess our budget assumptions and any potential risks so that we're getting ahead of it and, and avoiding any surprises that we might have from a budgetary standpoint, but also so that we're, can be nimble if there's any surprises from the state or our federal government when it comes to funding as well. We're really trying to develop a culture of fiscal responsibility in our district. And, and one thing that our director has really worked on is developing the, the four operational areas of focus. And this is where we get really tight on ways that we're gonna adjust how we manage our funding internally. So, and then something that everyone in this room is familiar with is our academic return on investment process. So continuing to, to utilize that process where we are involving our board and involving our building leaders in making sound decisions based on a process that assesses the return on investment that we're getting and how much we're spending on programming and initiatives. So all those things together and creating tighter systems will help reduce everything from variance, any hiccups in the system because we have tighter processes that are in place and ultimately help us understand the effectiveness of how we're using our funding. So those are, are ways that we'll accomplish this, this, this goal of being financially stable. And then the last slide, or, well, here's some more action items that I kind of just described, but let's go to the next slide. So the last goal is related to the 24-25 school year goals. And that's just building relationships in the community. Everything from making sure, having quarterly meetings with, or, or annual meetings with our, our local leaders, everything from our police chiefs to our mayors, to our city managers, but also getting out there and having, creating opportunities for the community to come in and feel welcome and give input and us to share out what some big initiatives are in the school district. And so those are things that we're mapping out right now. I know that our bond oversight committees and, and is an access point for that as well. And then getting into schools as much as possible and just listening to staff and, and being a resource to staff. And, and then at the state level, being an advocate for our public schools. One thing that we've talked about a lot this year is telling our own story. And that requires us being really intentional with the way that we are, that we're building relationships within the community. So those are just examples of how we are, of how we're continuing to try to build bridges, bridges in the community. And then, of course, having potentially a shared superintendent and board goal is a way to, a way to achieve that as well, too. So, okay, next slide. I just want to show a little bit of the work that we've already been doing towards the first two goals. One, developing a 10-year MLE plan. I want to give kudos to Director Un, or Dr. Un, who took the initiative on really developing this last year. She's really passionate about this work and, and has a great vision for how we can elevate the outcomes of our MLEs by putting systems into place with tracking process. So part of that, too, is updating a continuum of services. And so we have to make sure that we're understanding what our students' needs are and how to attend to their needs. And so some might be newcomers and they're gonna have different needs as a student who's getting ready to exit MLE services or ELD services, but still needs some sort of supports, right? So making sure that we have differentiation for the different needs of our students and where they are in their journey, but also where they are age-wise as well, whether in elementary, middle, or high. Again, reshaping the narrative of our school district and sharing the stories of our students. And I think we had that beautiful video earlier this year, and we're gonna find more ways to make sure that students' voices are elevated and heard in the district. And then from the fiscal stewardship, I mentioned earlier, but developing our four operational areas of focus. Our AROI timeline was updated and we're getting ready to jump right back into that work as well. And then just an elevated sense of precision on the way that we're monitoring and tracking our budget. That's all, those are all things that we've already started doing, so. And then the final slide is just an example of the type of buy-in that we have at the district level. We had a retreat in August and part of our component was, or part of our retreat, there's a component on teacher clarity. And with teacher clarity, we also talked about how do we do everything in our capacity to support our MLEs? And in the bulleted sections of this, of these slides, you'll just see the commitment of how staff are going to leverage their positionality to support our goal, to support our MLEs. So whether it's leveraging our TSI and CSI funds so that we can provide extra staffing and targeted staffing support so that kids can get high doses of tutoring, that's one example of how we may do that. Or working, working to map out our SIP plans so that there's very clear strategies for how we're gonna support our MLEs. Those are all things that our building leaders are committed to and that our district leadership team and the instructional side of the house are also working closely with our leaders on as well. So it's September, but we're already, we're already moving on our goals because, you know, the, the school year is 12 months long and it got started in July, so we're ready to go. Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much. And there'll be more, more updates on my goals in a couple of months here.
We would expect nothing less. Okay, we'll move on then to next, the first reading of the board goals. This is on page 20 of our board packet. The, I apologize, the cover sheet indicates that earlier this evening we met in a work session, I got the wrong document there and I apologize because we had, I first drafted this two weeks ago when we did have the work session. Obviously, we didn't have the work session for this earlier, so if the public is wondering why we didn't have this work session, that's why. Anyway, the goals, however, are what we worked out at that work session two weeks ago. And so I took all of the input I heard discussed at that meeting and I incorporated it in. A couple of the things that we had talked about were making it so that we had fewer goals, that were a little more targeted, and also that they tied in with our superintendent's goals. So for example, our new board goal to be to support strategies that address learning styles and learning gaps for our MLE students, that is directly tied to our superintendent's goals, so we have that as a shared goal. Similarly, our, our goal number four, support stronger relationships, maintaining a positive relationship with community and district staff, that ties in with our superintendent's goal to do similar. And then our particular piece of that financial oversight is specific to the due diligence and maintaining transparency as we work through bond projects and spend bond dollars. So again, our, our financial oversight of that is one of our major goals this year. I'm hoping that I was able to capture what was said in our work session. Are there any changes, additions, subtractions that my fellow board members would make edits to my draft?
It's not a change. I, but what I was gonna say was I think this is a great way to pare down what we had and make it manageable and things that we can really work on. And I really do like how we are tying our board goals with the superintendent goals this year. I think that just creates a much more robust relationship and opportunity to ensure that goals, whoever is kind of in charge of, of making that goal, will, they'll be done, right? So there's more accountability, there's more partnership, there's more collaboration. And still, these goals allow us to kind of stay in our lane as board and not get in the weeds, not get in the process, not get in the details, but still feel like we have that partnership piece. Oh, the only thing I might, it's itty-bitty, is just do MLE instead of MLL so that it stays consistent with.
Thank you.
That's tiki-tacky, sorry.
No, it's good.
And I would, we may have talked about this maybe in our retreat, I would love to see us maybe have a mid-year review of our goals and just do a progress check-in with some sort of rubric for, you know, we've got our mechanism for success, so where are we in our progress on some of these things? So we can either course correct or celebrate success or, so that when we look at them at the end of the year, we're not, it's not too late. Or, so, anyway, that's, I would love to see us do that.
Yeah, and that's part of our Learn Together as a Board, whereas last year we had goals that were around attendance at OSBA events. This time, it's more around doing a board self-evaluation and using the mid-year retreat to evaluate our progress on our goals, which I think is crucial. Anybody else? Okay, I'll make those minor changes and you'll see this come up for a second read probably in our consent agenda in two weeks. Thank you all. Okay, we'll now move into our action items. And we begin with our OSBA Board of Directors nomination. So the Oregon School Board Association Board of Directors is looking for volunteers from school boards across Washington County, for Washington County region. And our own Tristan Irvin has expressed an interest in being nominated again for position 16. She's done some amazing work in that position and I'm delighted that she's interested in doing it some more. So we have here, we as a board need to nominate her officially so that she can then be on OSBA's ballot, which all of the school board members in the state will vote on in November. So if there are no questions or comments or concerns, I would entertain a motion. It's on page 23.
I move that the Tiger Towleton School Board of Directors recommend the nomination of Director or Vice Chair Tristan Irvin for position 16 on the School Board Association Board of Directors as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved by Director Heim, is seconded by Director Weston, that we recommend the nomination of Tristan Irvin for position 16 on the Oregon School Board Association Board of Directors as presented. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say that I apologize for not being ready for the nomination. It's no bearing on whether I didn't want you to do it or not.
Thank you, Director. All right, if there's no further discussion or apologies, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All those who abstain.
I work for the organization, so I need to abstain.
Thank you very much. Okay, I count four yeses and one abstention, so the motion carries. We then move to page 26. We have the Oregon School Board Association Legislative Policy Committee nomination. I have been on the LPC this last year and enjoyed it very much. However, our very own Director Weston expressed an interest in stepping forward onto that position, and I think it would be a terrific thing for her to do. She's expressed so many times her interest in getting more involved in legislative policy issues. So she has expressed an interest and filled out the paperwork. So we have before you the similar form to nominate her for position 20 on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee.
This time, I'm ready, so. I move that the Tiger Towleton School Board nominate Crystal Weston for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position number 20 as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Director Heim, is seconded by Vice Chair Irvin, that we recommend the nomination of Director Crystal Weston to the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position number 20. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say, I think there's a growing awareness in Oregon about the importance of education, and I am a strong believer in doing what you can in the role you're in, but a lot of the work is happening at the state level and I'd be honored to contribute in a small way.
And I think you'd be dynamite. All right. If there's no other, no, he's not grabbing his mic for that, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those who abstain?
I abstain.
All right, motion carries with four votes and one abstention. We move now to our action item C, which is our Towleton Middle School Field Lighting Contract Project Approval. Director Kevin Montag, see, this time I know what his title is. And welcome. And Director C.
Good evening. So we're bringing tonight a contract for Towleton Middle School Field Lighting. A little bit of history on this project in the 2016 bond when we built Towleton Middle School and we put in the new turf field. We chose at that time to put in the infrastructure for the lighting poles just in case we could get that through land use as City of Tigerd. So I'm happy to announce that we finally did get that with our 2025 bond. We did get that land use approval from the City of Tigerd just recently. So we have, we went ahead and we already had it, but we were waiting for land use approval, but we had reached out to Musco Lighting there, the vendor that provided the lights at Towleton High and Tigerd High, so to be consistent across the district, the lighting systems, systems and controls. We went to Musco and under a cooperative KCDA purchasing agreement. Their proposal that they provided us with under that cooperative agreement is $345,440. You can see it represents, we do get a credit from that for having installed the bases and on the previous, during the previous bond. So all the electrical is there and everything's ready to go with, with their lights. So we're requesting approval to move forward with that and get approval on that contract.
Are there any questions? Director Weston.
I just want to make a comment. I know people that coach and I know how much time they spend looking for available fields. And so I view the addition of lighting almost like adding part of a field because it increases the amount of time the field can be used, and that matters a lot. And we have a very active community, which is great. And I really think that's where people should be, outside, interacting with each other, working with teams. And so it's a really beautiful thing and we do have a shortage of space. We're, we're always completely booked. If you go out to Cook Park on any given weekend, all day into the evening, all of our fields are being used, so I, I appreciate this project.
I also, I just want to clarify, the lights are the type that are very directed and focused, so they will not spill dazzling bright light into the backyards of our neighbors' houses in that area, correct?
Correct. So the, the requirement from the city code is that you have to have one-foot candle or less at the property line. These, these lighting, LED lighting systems are directional in the, in the way that they can do that. I had the opportunity to visit a school up in Washington a few years back with Director Bernard, looking at these systems compared to some of the others. Campus up there had the, the system and another system on it. We were standing at the property line, which was probably 10 feet away from the field, and we had to use the flashlights on our phone. It was, it was really impressive. The other lighting system that was on that, the other field that they had at that campus spilled over, so that these lights, they do have a diagram that we verified that they, they will have no more than one-foot candle at the property line. Do want to mention that according to our land use approval from the City of Tigerd, we were not required to do a neighborhood meeting, which kind of surprised us a little bit. We're going to go ahead and do that anyway, just to be good neighbors and let folks know and have an opportunity to comment before those lights.
to comment before those lights go up so that they're not surprised when the lights go up. And we'll be, we're working on putting that together now.
Thank you. I'm really glad to hear that because yes, we desperately need the field space and being able to extend the amount of time that the fields are usable is huge, but we also need to be good neighbors. So I, I love the way we've been able to do both of those things with this project.
Is this where I get to say let there be light? No? Okay. I move to award Musco Field Lighting, Inc. through KCDA Cooperative, the Towalty Field Light Project for an amount not to exceed $345,440.
Second. All right. It was moved by Director Heimis, seconded by Director Weston in a very tight race, that we award Musco Field Lighting, Inc. through KCDA Cooperative, the Towalty Field Lighting Project for an amount not to exceed $345,440. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining? All right. We passed by unanimous vote. Thank you so very much. Our next item is our bond land use contract approval.
So this is for land use for the, the 2025 bond that we need to do. We reached out to three land use consultants. And the proposals we received back, the lowest of that, of those three was StanTech. StanTech has done extensive work through the 2020, 2016 bond on our projects. So they have a history of, of land use and they have a lot of that stuff, which I think may have contributed to how they were a little bit lower on their pricing. And so you can see the breakdown at the, I think it's on page 60, where Fowler and Towleton High, where they've done extensive work in the 2016 bond, their pricing was, was significantly lower than, than one, one other vendor and, well, both the other ones. Fowler specifically is, is a big one that they're gonna, they're gonna bring that experience to as we get moving forward with that, the design of that school. So we're coming, asking for approval to award the contract to StanTech for land use services in the amount not to exceed $167,267.
Are there any questions? I'm always glad to see when the low bid is somebody with experience with us. It's, it gives you all the right warm fuzzy feelings that this is the right person to pick.
Agreed.
I move to award StanTech a contract for an amount not to exceed $167,267.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Irvin, seconded by Director Heimis, that we award Stanton a contract for an amount not to exceed $167,267. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final action item of the evening, I'm going to talk a little slow to give them time to get to the, is our nutrition services pizza contract. Jarvis Gomez is our presenter. Good evening.
Good evening. You save the best for last, right?
Absolutely. Pizza for last. How can it go wrong?
So in the past, nutrition services has purchased pizza through another vendor, most likely a lot of other school districts. It's generally frozen, labor-intensive to cook and prepare. This is an opportunity to contract with Pizza Hut. We have other districts around that have used Pizza Hut along with, actually Domino's, like Sherwood uses Domino's. For example, the reason to go this route is it's not frozen, it's delivered fresh, it still meets USDA requirements, meaning it's not the same pizza crust that you would go to when you go to Pizza Hut. It's different. It's, it meets, it's more of a healthy and we'll say a wheat type of crust rather than what you would buy at the, at the restaurant. So it does meet the USDA requirements. Another reason that this is helpful is because it's so labor-intensive, the kitchen staff can then use the labor hours to prepare more fresh food at the same time. So it's not, so the trade-off is good. The cost is very similar. It's, it's going to sound funny. It's about seven cents more expensive to go through Pizza Hut than what we buy from the other vendor, the frozen pizza. But you're saving that.
Not overall, sorry to interrupt. Not seven cents, total.
Well, not total, per slice.
Yes.
But what that does is we save on the labor cost. And so that's where the savings is. And so I didn't put the total on the explanation, but the total's about $228,000 total for the year that we would be contracting through. We're starting with middle and high school first, introducing it, make sure that it will sell them as a good product before we move it into elementary.
Just to add, part of it is we're, we're also hoping that with the fresh pizzas delivered from the service as opposed to frozen, that it might improve participation as well.
Correct. Yes.
Which will be better for the cost margins.
Yeah. And currently it's one option. At our secondary schools, we have multiple options for an entree. So it's not that only option.
Yeah, Director Weston?
So I must say that I'm skeptical of the nutritional excellence of pizza, but you've also made a good case for the trade-offs with the additional fresh produce. And back in the 90s, we had pizza where I went to school and we did just vote to make it really, so you can't use your cellphone at school. So I feel like altogether, maybe we should support this.
So yes, I agree. I don't normally think of pizza as nutritious. However, it does meet the federal guidelines with the whole wheat crust in particular. And I suspect it will be more popular. And we do want kids to have full bellies. However, we have four students sitting over there and I would like to just do a quick poll. Who would rather have frozen pizza and who would rather have delivered pizza from Pizza Hut? With a, with a 51% whole wheat crust?
I would vote the non-frozen pizza personally. Also, when would it roll out in the secondary schools as well?
Sorry.
When would it, like?
It's already rolled out.
Okay.
Correct, Jarvis. They're already, they're already getting.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. They delivered would be my choice.
I'm waiting for someone to say de jour now.
Assuming this replaces the pizza I've known for so long, I am 100% on board with this.
I don't like pizza, but I would rather eat fresh pizza.
Thank you for speaking truth to power. All right. So do we need this recommendation to have a dollar amount or is it finances, just the, the contract?
So it needs a dollar amount.
Okay, so. So if we can amend that proposed motion then to include up to $228,000, is that the correct?
Yeah, it was $228,000.
Thank you.
I move to award Pizza Hut as the district's contracted pizza vendor for the 25, 26 school year in an amount not to exceed $220,000. 228? 228? Oh, $228,000.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Irvin, seconded by Director Heimis, that we approve Pizza Hut as the direct, district's contracted pizza vendor for the 25, 26 school year for an amount up to $228,000. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much. And with that, we are.